And good evening. I am called to order the March 18th, 7:00 PM regular meeting of the Town Council. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And item number three is roll call.
Counselor Bayby?
Present.
Counselor Donovan?
Here.
Counselor Katerina?
Here.
Counselor Blais?
Here.
Counselor Hayes?
Here.
Counselor Chair Holbrook?
And I am here too. And I did hear from Counselor St. Clair. Unfortunately, she won't be able to join us this evening. She's home with a sick little one. So we will move right on to item number five, item number four, which is general public comments. So if anybody wishes to speak, you may rise and walk over to the podium. You have name, address, and three minutes. And seeing none, public comment. So item number five is minutes from the March 4th, 2015 regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
And any discussion, errors, omissions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? And we are unanimous. Item number six is adjustments to the agenda. There are none. Item number seven is treasurer's warrants, which I'll sign through the meeting. And item number eight is a non-action item, which is a final report from the Ad Hoc Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. And bear with me for just a moment here. So I will be on the spot for this. Thank you for the paper copy. And unfortunately, Becky Delaware had wanted to be with us this evening and speak a little bit to this. This is the final report for historic preservation. Unfortunately, there was a passing in her family, so she wasn't able to attend. But if you will, and for the benefit of the members of the public, I'll just kind of go through and briefly touch upon the report and how the Historic Preservation Committee came around and those types of things. So as you know, it was a council goal to start looking at historic preservation and try to address more or less the fact that we were losing some of our character and our historic value. This came at the same time that we were also seeking as a community the ability to do permitting within the town. And in order to do that, there was a historic preservation element that we needed to adopt some kind of historic preservation plan for Scarborough in order to do our permitting in-house. So came forward the Ad Hoc Historic Preservation Committee. The basis of this report talks a lot about several items. The first is the concept of some working groups to address certain task-specific items. So to form those small groups for such items as cemeteries, obviously. The state has decided to change about cemetery maintenance and to maybe have a small working group that coordinates and manages volunteers and works through, trying to go through the cemeteries and group them up and make them look nice and those sorts of things. The other recommendations were to continue identifying and working on projects that can be done through, similar to the Danish Village, where there's task-specific properties that are identified as being unique and trying to find ways to help encourage and support the preservation of those projects. They do also talk about the Honawal House and trying to have that as more of a community space and being able to open that up in the warmer months. Be a little cold to go right now. But certainly, again, coordinating with some volunteers and getting it open for tours and those sorts of things. There's also the historic data repository. So again, now that we have this information, they were fortunate to have the '94 survey, which provided a lot of that information. But to create a data repository within the actual GIS mapping and in some of these other areas to maintain that. Right now, everything is in some very large volumes and paper copies. So certainly bringing that information into current technology and having it accessible would be useful. Also, they do talk about having a self-guided tour. That's something that we could be working with, with Kate's new position for communications and those sorts of things. We think it would be great to have some type of Android, Apple app or something to do a self-guided tour to our historic sites here in the community. They also have site review. One of their recommendations is that we form a regular standing Historic Preservation Implementation Committee. And that one of their annual tasks, and that will be a later item this evening as well, would to be annually review the list so that we make sure that these buildings are, one, still standing. And two, if there should be any additions. And through that addition process, they talked about having kind of a self-nomination process where if somebody is interested on being on our list, which will be in the ordinance later come, this evening actually, to have a mechanism for those folks to apply and ask to be on the list and have them review that as a standing committee. Let's see, what else? And again, just some work-specific working group tasks, signage program. Some of that would be plaques that designate, offering plaques to the homeowners that have homes that are designated as significant, as well as some local signage, which would be more of neighborhood-type meetings that should, again, each neighborhood is unique. Scarborough was made initially of six villages. They think it's important to kind of touch home with each of those villages and host a few neighborhood meetings and talk about important areas that maybe that would be, used to be designated out. Obviously, Pine Point is a big area. That is well-established, has its own signage that says, "Welcome to Pine Point." But there are other areas like that within the community that would benefit from signage. Again, there's also some historic sites that would benefit from signage. So again, very task-specific working groups to work on things like that. So as I said, as the quick kind of run-through of the report that we all have in front of us, is there any questions that you might have?
Are we going to get into the discussion of how homes and properties are put onto the list in the discussion of the ordinance?
Into the criteria? Yeah, the criteria should be listed in the ordinance, yes.
So we'll discuss that at that point in time?
Yep. Right now, it's just the report. Any other questions?
No, I mean, it just looked like an impressive amount of work by the committee. The detailed analysis and the very substantive recommendations, I thought, it was very impressive.
And if I might throw, for maybe just a moment, if I could throw Craig Frederick under the bus to see if he was the mastermind chair behind this committee. So if he had any other comments he might like to add on the report.
Well, to answer your questions, question.
Yeah, you see, I'm sorry. Can I force you to go to the podium? Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Yes, I'm Craig Frederick, and I am or was the chair, I guess I still am the chair of the Ad Hoc Committee, although this was a committee job. One of the things that we focused on is the need, historic preservation is ongoing, and we thought that a mechanism was necessary to keep the review going. We talked about in the committee what to do about things that we thought might be historic in 50 years. Didn't come up with a real easy answer to that. And the answer is to keep plugging away at it. And in the report, one of our major recommendations is that a successor committee, at least once a year, review the list, mostly for additions, but also possibly for deletions. And that that be done on an ongoing basis, and then a recommendation may be made to the council every year, since it's, of course, your decision who to actually put on the list, what, in the final analysis is there. Other than that, it was mostly detailed things that we think should be followed up on. Not all at once, not all in the next year, but that we just keep an eye on the history. We were worried because of the 1994 survey. We just stumbled over that getting going. Did not know it existed. And it seemed to me pretty obvious that it was an example that if you don't keep punching away at historic preservation and keeping it in mind, you will lose things like that. Getting that data and the treasure trove that the Scarborough Historical Society maintains is, I think, very important to just, even if we don't do anything, let's at least keep the data so somebody in the future can keep it going. And the town already has the mechanism in place for that in its GIS system. It should be possible to integrate the historical data there. There is a historical layer already in the GIS system. So it's already started. We just think you ought to plug away on it. Not that it's a huge, most important thing ever done, but we live in a very old town, and we ought to remember that.
Thank you very much.
Is that enough, Madam Chair?
That is fantastic. Thank you. So I just would like to maybe wrap up if there's no other comments. That I do just want to say thank you to the committee. They worked diligently and very productively towards coming to the ball of having this report. I do believe they have maybe one more meeting before they sunset. But they have done an outstanding job, I think, of really taking a thorough look and spending a significant amount of time on how to encourage preservation without demanding or forcing or requiring preservation and to really have that partnership of working with the homeowner. So again, just thank you very much for all of your time. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is order number 15-007, which is a 7:00 PM public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 405, the Scarborough zoning ordinance, establishing a new section, VIIG, Historic Preservation Provisions, which would create a local list of historic properties and provide for zoning and building code incentives for preservation of these historic resources. So again, this is the public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this matter?
Madam Chair, would it be helpful, Dan Bacon's here. He doesn't need to make a presentation, but certainly can do that if that serves your needs or the public's. I think he's done it once before, so he could maybe do the highlights at this point? Would that be okay?
Now you're on the hot seat. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair and Town Councilors. I think you did a great introduction already with your presentation of the work of the Ad Hoc Historic Preservation Committee. I think this is one of their key accomplishments, is forwarding this proposal to you and illustrates a lot of their hard work. As has already been mentioned, this committee came up with a locally significant historic properties list, widowing down a very long list from the inventory that Craig was mentioning in '94 to 48 to 50 properties that are proposed. And in the ordinance, there is a criteria that was used for selection to this list. And I know that they were very diligent and thoughtful in terms of what was on the list. So these zoning amendments established the local list of locally significant historic properties. And then, as the chair has indicated, really tried to encourage and incentivize preservation through zoning and building codes, but not require it. So there are kind of, there's the two key encouragements or incentives. One is to provide for residential density credit, what we're calling a residential density credit. And basically, the way that's written is that, say, there's a historic property within a subdivision or a development site, the developer of the property would get credit for preservation of that building and lot and be able to get, instead of that lot using up the density that the lot allows for, they actually get to apply that amount of density to the rest of the project. So they don't, they get basically, you get to count what could happen on that property twice within a development project. So that's one incentive, a design to discourage removing an old building in favor of a new building because you can get just as many development lots by preserving it. The other is in our building and fire codes, there are actually exceptions for historic buildings that are recognized at the state, federal, local level. And since there's a new list proposed, these properties, if enacted, would be able to take advantage of those exceptions. And that can help with rehabs and renovations of these buildings that they can, in many cases, preserve some of the historical character or things that make them historic and not have to bring them up to code. That's seen as a pretty nice incentive. The other thing that this allows for or actually requires is if a project goes before the planning board, there does need to be some look at the property and consideration made for historic preservation before decisions made to remove the building. It's a step, it's not a mandate that the building needs to stay, but it's a check-in to see if historic preservation is possible through these incentives. So in a nutshell, that's the amendments proposed before you.
Thank you, Dan. And before we get too far, we do have the public hearing. So does anybody wish to speak on this item? And seeing none. Pleasure of the count.
Move approval?
Second.
All right, and discussion?
So a question for you is the relationship between the ordinance, including its changes, and this Historical Preservation Implementation Committee or a future committee. I don't see any correlation between the two within the ordinance. So in our planning code, we generally, there is a correlation between the planning department going to the planning board for approval or some type of collaboration that is required. I didn't see where, based on this, it's, they should go to that committee. Am I misreading and it's actually in there because I couldn't find it?
No.
Do you see, I'm not sure if I'm expressing myself the right way?
One of the next items is actually the Act to Establish the Committee.
Right.
And the committee would only be advisory to the council and would also be made available to the planning board to talk about, you know, when there's an inquiry of somebody from the less trigged site plan. But the property owner would not need to go directly to.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking of the property owner's ability to go to the committee. It was whether or not the town is required to go to the committee before going to the planning board. There's no mention of the relationship anywhere in the ordinance. I understand that the resolution will establish the committee. I'm just suggesting is that there's, nothing says that the town planning department has to go to the committee to get their advice. I don't see it in the ordinance.
I think that was done by design in that it was really set up to make sure it could be administratively administered going forward. So we have the list of 48 or 50 that will be modified presumably over time. But it's the planning department, as its administrative function, will refer to that list. And if, in fact, a property is on it, then you move on to the next. And furthermore, this implementation committee was not envisioned to be a standing forever kind of committee. So I think it would have, just given its current composition or proposed composition and mandate, it probably wouldn't be appropriate to recognize it because it's not going to exist forever, whereas the ordinance will survive it. Does that make sense?
It does. And actually, that leads into a second question. But I think that the chairwoman may have an answer to my question, maybe? Is there a reference in there and I just missed it?
Yes.
Okay, can you just tell me where it was?
Sure. It's not page numbered, so I was trying to, but it's the.
Section.
The section two, I mean, 406 subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
Because of the nature of how site plan, it's when they subdivide, that's when it triggers. And yes, it's in there that they, the way it's written, sorry, let me pull that back up.
So I can look at that.
In number two, it just says the planning.
Hi, look, I just couldn't find it. But that's my fault.
The planning board, the planning department applicant may consult with the state Historic Preservation Office, the Scarborough Historic Society, or similar organization.
So it's a similar organization, okay. So the second question or comment that I had was about the permanency of such a committee because I think that there is, while I understand that this is temporary and it's an implementation, I do hope that we consider making the historical preservation a permanent committee, advisory committee within our town, once it has been fully implemented. So I wanted to see the stages of how that we might get there. So that's why I was looking for the reference to the relationship within the document. Thank you.
That's a yes vote from you.
Absolutely.
Is there anybody else that wishes to ask?
I'd just like to come back to the point about how properties get on the list. The list was created by the committee through tons and tons of research and so on and so forth. Were the property owners notified that they were going to be on the list? Were they asked whether they wanted to be on the list or not?
We hosted a owners' meeting right here, actually, in council chambers, although it was lightly attended. But anybody that was a candidate on the list did receive a letter through, I believe it was the planning department, Dan, correct? Yes. So there was outreach to the owners.
But did the owners come back and say, "Hey, you're early, I want to be on the list"?
To date, I've had nobody say they didn't want to be on the list. But certainly, the committee has always had the position of, if somebody really, truly just didn't want to be on the list, then we'd be happy to remove them.
We didn't insist on getting like a written confirmation that, yes, I want to be on the list. And I think that's partially due to the fact that the approach taken here is really incentive-laden. There's no requirement, it really would not be in someone's, I don't know why they would be opposed to having this structure included. In fact, it may even open up some opportunities for development. It certainly doesn't bar them from doing whatever they wish with the property.
Much better answer, Tom, thank you.
So additions in the future are going to be handled the same way? The committee is going to take a look at the properties that they went by the first time and pick another three or four or something like that? I'm sure they'll go after the property owners, "We want to put you on the list." And if the property owner doesn't come back, they put it on the list, right?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, there was in the recommendation of the report, it's a self-nomination moving forward. So if they would like to be on the list, then they can be. But they would submit that to the committee. Or actually, technically, it would be to Tody in the clerk's office and then provide it to the committee.
And then ultimately, it would be the sitting council at the time to adopt it.
Adopt it.
It would actually change the ordinance, I suppose, to add properties. You're right. There's not likely to be brisk activity in the near future to add properties, given the level of research and evaluation done. As was suggested, you know, in 20 years, there might be then historic properties that aren't now. But there's not likely to be swift movement in lots of properties coming on to this in the next five or seven years, I suspect.
How many properties are on commercial land? Anybody an idea?
Oh, Dan, would you be able to possibly?
I don't have an exact number, but in terms of proportions, I'd say a third are commercial and two-thirds are residential. I mean, we can run down and give you a more precise answer, but that's.
I'm just curious.
I mean, I say that in particular because the Dunston area, Route 1 in Dunston has, I would say that's a cluster of historic properties for the community. And a number of those are commercial. That's by and large the biggest cluster of commercial properties. Other than that, they're largely residential. But I would say two-thirds, one-third, one-third being the commercial.
Were you all set, Ken?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I like this approach to the preservation of historic properties. Having dealt with Portland's Historic Preservation Board, where it's required that you do all of these things and you've got to make sure that if you replace windows, if you're in a historic district, you've got to get permission and yadda, yadda, yadda. That can be very restrictive on people and the way they own their properties. And so I like this approach much better, so thank you.
And does anybody else wish to speak? Well, I don't think it'll come as a big surprise that I'm going to support it. But again, I do just want to say, again, express my gratitude to the committee members. Again, I think they've done an excellent job of, again, that partnership of working with an owner rather than, you know, really forcing or demanding of an owner. So hopefully, this, again, helps with the burden of maintaining one of our unique and charming historic homes here in Scarborough. With that, all those in favor? And that is unanimous, okay. So the next item is Resolution 15-002, which is Act on the Request to Establish a Standing Historic Preservation Implementation Committee. And does anybody wish to speak on this item? All right, and seeing none, I will close the comment. And this will be in the form of a motion, be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Scarborough, Maine, and Town Council assembled. That, whereas the Town Council does hereby recognize the importance of historic preservation within the Town of Scarborough, and it is important to preserve the historic quality of the town for future generations to learn about and enjoy. And whereas on April 17th, 2013, the Town Council approved Resolution 13-02, establishing the Ad Hoc Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, charged to craft a townwide plan for preserving the historical pieces and places that can be used as a guide for future reference. Now, therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Scarborough and the Town Council assembled, that with its work completed, the Ad Hoc Historic Preservation Advisory Committee recommends to the Town Council to establish a Historic Preservation Implementation Committee to preserve the town's historical footprint. Now, therefore, be it further resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Scarborough, Maine, and Town Council assembled, and the Town Council does hereby establish the Historic Preservation Implementation Committee, and its charge shall be as follows. One, its purpose. The purpose of the committee is to serve as an advisory committee to the Town Council regarding historic preservation for the Town of Scarborough and to implement the final report and recommendations from the Ad Hoc Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. Two, its duties. The committee shall have the following duties concerning historic preservation. Review and. Review and consider planning efforts, develop further recommendations for the town council, provide an annual report to the council, and oversee, encourage, coordinate, and carry out as appropriate preservation efforts and activities, including creating in consultation with the town manager, task-specific working groups, and as appropriate, at least annually, reviewing and making recommendations to the town council regarding the list of historic sites and ordinances and elsewhere. And advising the town council, planning board, and other boards and committees and town staff regarding historic preservation issues that come before them. And maintaining an up-to-date watch list of historic properties, the preservation of which may be or in the near future may become uncertain. The membership. The committee shall be comprised of five members. One member shall be the town council member appointed as liaison to the committee. All remaining appointments will be made by the town council. Terms of these four members will be for two years and will expire on December thirty-first. The initial appointments will be two, with terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty sixteen, and two terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty seventeen. Vacancies and removals. Any vacancy shall be filled by the town council. The town council may remove any member of the committee by vote of majority of its members for misconduct or non-performance of duty. And five procedures. The three members of the committee shall constitute a quorum. Every action by the committee shall require the concurrence of three members. The committee shall select one of its members to serve as chair and another member who shall serve as recording clerk and keep the minutes of all proceedings and submit these to the town clerk's office for filing. The committee shall set its own meeting schedules, which will be open to the public. Signed and sealed this eighteen day of March, twenty fifteen, on behalf of the Scarborough Town Council and the town manager of Scarborough, Maine. And that was in the form of a motion.
Second.
And any discussion? All right, and seeing none, and now that I'm out of breath, all those in favor, that is unanimous. So, where is no old business at this time, so we will move right into new business, which is order number fifteen dash zero one nine, first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendment to chapter three oh two, the town of Scarborough Town Council Rules, Policies, and Procedures Manual, as recommended by the Rules and Policies Committee. And what I will do is before we take public comment, not that I think there's droves of people hopping up and down, if we could, I believe, if Bill, if you wanted to maybe just kind of introduce this item to us?
Thank you. The Rules and Policy Committee met several times. Councilors Caterina and Hayes and myself, town manager Tom Hall joined us, was at work sessions, and we addressed a couple of items, and I'll review them briefly for you. The first was, neither of these are terribly huge issues, but it was- they were important enough for us to feel that some additions and corrections were appropriate. The first was related to appointments to town boards and committees. It is evident to a number of us that from time to time, a newly appointed board member or committee member finds that the arrangement is not exactly what they expected it to be, that their schedules don't jibe with allowing them to attend the meetings, or the manner in which the actions and tasks of the committee actually take place just don't fit well with them. The same with committees, sometimes people just don't fit in well. It was deemed appropriate to add a provision that said, "The term for new appointees will be for one year," and therefore give the opportunity to a person or a committee to make a judgment as to whether or not this is working before they sign themselves up for a three-year term, which is the customary length of time. I will make a motion to this once the matter is moved and seconded. Craig Frederick made a suggestion that I think is a good suggestion, to add words at the end of that addition that says, "Unless otherwise determined by the town council," and so that if people who are known to the appointments committee and already appreciate what they're getting into should present themselves at the appointments committee wishes to make a recommendation to us, and we, in turn, acting upon it, may immediately just pass on the one-year requirement and go to three years. So that's the change with relative to the appointment to committees. The decorum issue two point- two oh two point three A is a desire to maybe be more articulate in what we expect for behavior decorum at our town meetings. The previous provisions were- were pretty sparse in terms of the language that was used, and we thought it would be good to clarify what was specifically expected of people, to clarify the authority of the chair to take appropriate action. And so we have in turn reviewed Portland's Brunswick and Freeport's language. None of them really seemed to be exactly what we wanted, but nevertheless, from it, it gave us some ideas as to language that all three committee members strongly supported and felt was appropriate. So that what we have done here is essentially two things. We have added a provision that requires anyone who's addressing the council to direct their remarks to the chair and not to any individual in the audience or any individual who they might want to get into an argument with, who is a council member, and that's really just to uphold the dignity of the proceeding. And that allows the chair to manage public hearings in an appropriate way. We also use some language that we attempted to describe the kinds of personal or rude or provocative remarks that really are intended to only disrupt the proceeding and shouldn't be tolerated. So those, uh, those came out of a review of these other ordinances, which were more explicit than ours has previously been. So those are the two, uh, the two changes that are proposed by the Rules Committee.
Thank you, Bill. And is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? And going, going, all right. Close the public comment and pleasure of the council.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, and-
Move to amend-
Okay.
-by adding the words to follow the proposed additional language, quote, "The term for new appointees will be for one year." The amendment will be to add the words, "Unless otherwise determined by the town council."
And I will-
Second.
And discussion on the amendment. All right, and seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment? And that's unanimous. So back to the main motion and discussion. Sean?
Um, thank you. I was actually, I was going to actually do the amendment for you, but I'm glad you were on top of that. I think, um, one is very nice. It does at least allow for that review, and I think it's a nice change regarding the one-year appointment rather than two or three, and that way if you need to back off for whatever reasons, that's really nice. I think the bigger issue here is section two oh two point three, and I'm in full support of it. We live in a society now that people believe that they can just be flat-out rude to everybody, and I think that when we're in this chamber, we're not rude to each other and we should not be talked to rudely by others and we should not talk to other people rudely. And so we have seen an example, at least in the one, since I've been back, I know of once, and I know and have seen historically that others have done that in the past too. So I think this is a great move forward so that it's clear and known, so I appreciate the work of the committee.
And anybody else who should speak on this item? All right.
I'd just offer one piece of clarification. There was, I would refer to as a scribner error, there was a parenthetical word impolite in the draft you see before you.
Mm-hmm.
You see that?
Yep.
That was really meant to be a word choice, and rude and impolite, I believe, are interchangeable, so I would suggest we just simply remove the parenthetical impolite, so rude will remain. That was just an oversight on our part.
Thank you.
And just a further point I want to clarify, though it's not in front of you, the companion to the changes to the appointment is the actual application that Todi uses, and we've chosen to improve that in a couple of different ways. We've encouraged the attachment of a resume or other background-like information so the ordinance, excuse me, the appointments committee has a better sense of the candidates that are before them. And we also are making candidates aware that we- we may well do some search of publicly available records about their candidacy. Again, just kind of disclaimers, we're certainly not doing background checks, but I think these are two very good improvements to the application form and ought to really ensure that we've got good candidates and match them well with our needs.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, because we were handed a new version when we walked in, I just want to make sure, because that was the version I thought was being-
I beg your pardon.
So that impolite was already deleted, and they actually included or provocative remarks.
That was in-
So I just want to make sure that's the one that we-
Okay, all right. I just want to clarify which-
I want to make-
-everyone thought they were voting on, thank you.
The second word's important.
Impolite's nice, too.
Double negative.
And Ed?
Just one quick question on the appointments. If we're going to appoint for a year, normally isn't a person appointed for a term either, you know, filling out a three-year term or a two-year term? How is the one-year assignment going to go along with the terms? Because you usually, on a board, you have terms for three years, and you've got three people here, two people there, three people there. Is this going to follow things up, or are we not going to worry about that?
It potentially will throw off the intentional staggering of terms to make sure you have consistency on committees, but I think that's something we can be mindful of and work toward. Clearly, the goal is to make sure a committee has adequate numbers to be able to function. But you may be right, there may be some sputtering initially in terms of the staggering being thrown off a bit, but I think if we're on top of it, we'll be able to manage it.
I think if a person is going to be nominated to a three-year term, it should be nominated to the three-year term with the first year being on probation, whatever you want to call it. And then if it doesn't work out, you appoint somebody to the remainder of the term, which is done all the time, right? We do that all the time. Somebody will leave and you fill out a two-year term or something.
If somebody leaves, we do fill the remainder term if there's a candidate.
So you might- you might be able to just do it like that and not worry about it. Thank Tom.
Well, it may well be that the appointments committee chooses to continue to recommend the three-year terms, and this is an opportunity for a candidate who is hesitant or wondering whether they'll like it, so the exception might be the one-year term. I think that, the way this is worded, it gives the authority to the appointments committee in their recommendation of the council, so it may well be that you continue to see three-year terms being recommended.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
I mentioned note, and Tom was picking up some of the details, that we also discussed in recommending that the rules of decorum be more clearly posted in the chambers so that people just are more aware of it, and we expect that we may try to come up with some summary language that may be able to assist chairs in the future as to being able to remind the members of the public in advance of a pub- of the- at the beginning of the meeting, that there are rules of decorum that we expect them to be.
All right, anybody else? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? And that is unanimous. On to the next item will be order number fifteen dash zero two zero, first reading and schedule a second reading on the bond order for the twenty fifteen municipal and school capital improvement product- project. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this matter? Right up to the podium, name and address in three minutes.
Mike Turek, eleven Bayberry Lane. I won't need three minutes, and I won't be rude. The information that's going to be presented for these bond issues that are coming up on this item, will that be available to the public so that people can look at this and study it before the second reading down the road?
Sure, the information is available as part of the agenda packet, but we have copies here that I can share with you as well.
Beautiful, I appreciate that. And the other thing is, I'm curious, what is the town debt at this time? I imagine you pay it down a little each month, right? Just like I pay my mortgage down, or you pay it quarterly, but do we have an idea of what that debt stands at? Now, it was approaching a hundred million dollars, I think, at one time. That is my concern. I do believe that in a past meeting somewhere along the line, the town manager has mentioned that, I think it's called the debt ratio, that we are within acceptable limits, but still the debt in itself scares me, and I just lay awake and think of the things that we could do with the money that we use to service the debt every month, and I fear that we'll just continue to grow more debt instead of getting rid of the debt we have. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, do you by any chance, Tom, know the debt total number to date, or is that something we'd need to-
There's something-
Write those numbers off the top of your head.
I believe this would put it over a hundred million. I can't be-
Give the duff.
Ruth's shaking her head. Why don't I refer to the finance director?
Oh, hey, who's going in the audience?
Hi, Ruth Porter, Finance Director.
Jump up and answer.
At June thirtieth, our outstanding debt was approximately ninety-eight million dollars. We paid down some of that this year. I don't have the number right off the bat, but it's around probably the six million that we're also looking to borrow again, so we're probably going to stay probably right around the ninety-eight million.
Thank you very much, Ruth. All right, so is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public comment and pleasure of the council.
Move approval.
Second.
And-
Can I, I'm sorry, you're too quick on the draw. I was going to distribute a new version, and I wanted to explain what amounted to be an oversight on our part in terms of the bond order in front of you. Yep, they have some this way. So the item that was on your agenda included something just over six million dollars, six million eighty-five thousand dollars. That is in fact the total amount that we are looking to bond in this spring bond issue. Some portions of that money have already been authorized by a prior council. In fact, it's the final four items, if you will. It's about two million dollars of the school projects for two thousand twelve and thirteen, school projects for ten and eleven, municipal projects for nine and ten, and the final one is the Benjamin Farm money way back from two thousand three and four. So it was an oversight on our part. We do not need additional authorization. A prior council's already granted that. But in fact, that total amount of six million eighty-five thousand will be the total amount we go to issue this spring, and that's a great example of how these projects, though they've been approved by a prior council and authorized for borrowing, things happen over time, and the projects don't happen. Land conservation is a great example of that. So in fact, what I just distributed just now provides the total, which is four million twenty-eight thousand, from which we seek bond authorization. Does that make sense?
Totally.
So I'm not sure procedurally how you want to do that, whether you could rescind or-
You wish to have the motion withdrawn by the person making the motion?
I think it'd be best, because if you would reconsider it with a new amount.
All right, so does everybody retract their first and second?
Love to.
Okay. And do we have a motion to replace with the document in front of us?
Move rule.
Second.
All right, so discussion on the document in front of us.
But just for the, I mean, the citizens don't get to see the document in front of us, but just to, on the dollar value, just to be clear, the request now is for four point zero two eight million dollars. I think it's really important to inform a couple of things. One is, we're kind of coming into this as, this is the way that it's always happened. Not that it's bad, but it can be better, and I've talked to a couple of finance committee members, and I think that going forward, and I've talked to, I should say I talked to at least one, but also- I've talked to, I should say I talked to at least one, but also with the town manager, that what we would like to do is actually vet the, in the future, not these, but in the future, vet the capital improvements or the bonding items, really because we have an executive and an administrative oversight responsibility, not necessarily to justify whether or not something should be funded, because unlike state government, if the voters approve something and the prior town councils approve something, we're going to approve it and not withhold the bonds. But we do have a responsibility, we do have a responsibility to at least look at the terms and the conditions of those bonds, to make sure that computers aren't being bonded for thirty years when they should be one or two, or, you know, or a truck should be five or seven and not twenty. So we do have that responsibility. So I do want you to know that I did approach the manager. That's definitely something that we can do going forward in the new cycle. But for the citizens, keep in mind that this bonding, these are everything that the councils before us approved. I don't believe any of this, at least none of this was approved during my tenure. So all we're doing is fulfilling the prior council's obligations and promises that they meet to the community, and that's why I'm in favor of the requests being made tonight without further evaluation.
Anybody else? Peter?
Well, I think what I'd like to add, and actually, I think we have had conversations, this is a great conversation to talk about how we approach this going forward, and I think to kind of dovetail on the comment that we heard from the public, is as we think about, there's really two costs to the taxpayers of things we're doing. It's the operating budget we approve every year, which is in your current tax rate. But these types of things, the capex budget, really represent future liabilities and future costs. So there's really two components to what we're asking taxpayers to commit to. It's the operating budget every year plus the impact of what we do approve for capex. And I'd like to find a way that we can share what that impact is. And so recently, there was a yardstick that was developed that for about every two million dollars of expenditures, it impacts taxpayers by about three hundred dollars on the average household. So when you think about this six million dollar capex, that's a nine hundred dollar impact over the life of the bonds that is a future liability to taxpayers. So I think it's important for us to find ways that we communicate what our combined spending is. It's your operating budget plus the capex that we approve. And I think we've had a conversation about can we do a better job of sharing that with all of you at home and constituents, so you know what we're really approving each year as far as current tax liabilities you're going to have in the current tax year plus what future liabilities might be for all the capital expenditures that are approved at the same time.
And...
I have questions as to why are we approving this at this point in time? Why wouldn't we approve this at the time of our budget? I mean, this is, this is an impact on our budget. So now, if we approve this tonight, this is a given. Right?
Yeah, all of these have either voter approval or prior budget approval by way of the prior council. And at the time of that...
But we haven't spent any of the money yet.
Well, as a matter of fact, most of these projects have been bought and paid for using town funds, and we end up reimbursing ourselves with bond proceeds, but that's beside the fact, I suppose. But at the time of budget approval, and most of these items will be seen through the capital budget as opposed to operating, we do indicate in part of your approval gives staff the nod as to how to finance these items. Some capital items are actually appropriated money, so tax rate does raise funds for capital items. Most of capital items end up being financed for some period or another. In fact, some of the items on this list are to be financed for a year, others as long as twenty years, depending on the type of item it is. So I think it's important for the council to take this action, as Council Bayline said, there are a lot of particulars relative to the actual bond issue in terms of length of term, and that's really what this is all about, is the council giving a final blessing to staff based on this recommendation that this borrowing is appropriate to fulfill the prior obligation made.
Bill?
Just so that people out there will understand, capex is just a shorthand way of saying capital expenditure, just so you realize. These are all capital assets that have different useful lives, and the bonds are then arranged so as to be paid off consistent with the life of the asset. Trucks have longer lives than computers. Buildings have longer lives than trucks. So that's all part of the process that goes on, but I just wanted the public to realize that we're talking about capital assets being bonded and nothing else.
Anybody else?
Just a final piece. I know I've talked to a couple of councils on the finance committee, and I think this is a great subject for one or more future finance committee meetings, maybe post-budget. We're going to be busy over the next month or so, six weeks. But we have a consultant that assists us in this effort, and I think the concern we heard from the podium is one that I think we're all sensitive to, that let's understand what our total debt load is and how we can really manage that going forward. I think financing long-term debt is viable and an essential part of running an operation of this size, but I think we also have to have some conversation around how to do that within our comfort. So I'd be pleased to set that up as soon as we get through some of the budget process.
All right. So any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Onto the next item, order number fifteen dash zero two one, act on the request to amend the disposition of tax-acquired property policy as recommended by the Rules and Policy Committee. And again, if we haven't looked the bill, so if I hadn't just introduced this item to us.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The foreclosure and redemption process has been the subject of discussion before the board previously. We have a long list of properties that have been foreclosed upon by the town, and our town manager has said they have been sort of passed over and not, no actions really been taken to dispose of them. So, and we had some anomalies where people missed it and the foreclosure took place. And our present law has a provision for residential properties that our owner occupies whereby arrangements can be made for a payment plan. Well, there are more than just that set of circumstances that are necessary to deal with that kind of unusual situation where some arrangement should be made. I think the way the Rules and Policies Committee came at it was that we did not want to be taking properties of substantial value, substantial equity, where it was inadvertent and there was an opportunity for the owner to pay us back everything that we put into the process of foreclosing. And kind of a last opportunity, ninety days at the conclusion of the foreclosure upon notice, that's one last time, a chance to get it back. So it's what I think, based on what we've learned, a generous policy compared to what other municipalities have, but we didn't think we ought to be in the business of taking people's equity when there's just a lot of circumstances that can arise and make it difficult for people. So while this is not an open-ended arrangement that's being proposed, it nevertheless does expand in the area of non-residential or residential properties that are not owner-occupied. And essentially provides for a ninety-day period of time post-foreclosure after we own it, when the former property owner acknowledges that we do own it, that they can get the property back by being from us, the warranties, of course, with it, by making a full and complete payment within ninety days. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for giving the introduction to that. So at this time, we will take public comment on this matter. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Name, address, and three minutes, please.
Madam Chair, members of the council, my name is Rick Chanel. I live at Nine Hampton Circle here in Scarborough. I'm not here on behalf of any particular client, although those of you who participated in the workshop on this a month or so ago know the circumstances involving the property of Mr. Pio and my client, the Catholic Foundation. I simply want to thank the manager and those of you who've worked on this to develop a mechanism that gives us the opportunity, gives former property owners the opportunity to get their property back. I read this as creating a case-by-case basis, and the owner will have to come and make their case to the council that their particular property should be put into this Article Four process, the buyback process, if you will. It doesn't mandate that that happened, but it opens up an opportunity that wasn't in the policy before, and it gives the manager some latitude working with the council to do that. So to the extent our situation precipitated the policy committee looking at this and working on it, and the manager working hard to develop it, we appreciate it very much and look forward to you passing it, and then hopefully we can move through the process on our particular situation. So again, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? And seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and pleasure of the council.
Second.
And discussion. And Sean?
So a couple of questions that come to mind. Council Donovan mentioned that once an owner has acknowledged that the town owns the property, if you have an unresponsive owner, how is that acknowledgement accepted, or how is that defined?
Well, that certainly is a circumstance that we're not unfamiliar with, where we have an unresponsive taxpayer. I'm not exactly sure if we need acknowledgement, but to the extent we can make contact with the prior owner, we wouldn't be even considering this, I guess, if we couldn't. I think they would, we'd look for some confirmation on their part, just acknowledgement that we own it. I don't think we necessarily need it, but we would look for that. And it really is initiated by the town contacting them, and I think we may have to use all means possible, not just certified and registered, which are required here, or certified in regular US mail. We may also knock on the front door. It's remarkable to me, but many folks choose not to visit mail or...
Sure.
Let me just add to Tom's comments that we don't want people to show up and present, and say, we maybe like to take advantage of this, but I'm doing it under a reservation of rights that you may not have done the foreclosure properly. And so it's really just a condition of if you want to talk to us, you've got to acknowledge that the foreclosure has given us title. And that's really why that was in...
Good point.
And if, of course, we get, if it's a non-responsive owner, then so be it, that's fine, and we'll just go and we'll provide the town manager with the authority to do a public sale, as the provision presently provides, under the best terms available to the town.
So, and that's a nice segue, so thank you, and it's a nice segue into the second part of what I wanted to understand better, and that is that while this solves an immediate issue with one particular resident, the question I have is what changes our behavior to make sure that it's followed and that we started disposing of this tax-acquired property? Because every council and every town manager before us, and probably even after us, are nervous when we get into this situation, because you are dealing with, you know, residential rights, you know, it's a very sensitive subject. I just want to know, how is this going to change so that going forward, we follow the rule and that we're getting rid of the property after ninety days? I don't care if it's ninety, a hundred and twenty, or even two years. What changes our behavior to make sure that we're not back into this situation where we have another thirty, fifty properties, because things are going to get tighter and tighter with our residents?
Excellent point. No, except responsibility, though I inherited most of these, but I share in the responsibility. I think to answer your question, I'm committed to working through the current backlog, which is something in the order of twenty properties. And I've had conversations with the Rules and Policies Committee, and will be making formal recommendations to the full council as to how to dispose of those. Some may fall under this Article Four, others, they're already in an installment payment arrangement, others I'll be recommending we sell or dispose of somehow. So that is likely to be a fairly lengthy process, just kind of work through that backlog. And then it's going to require annual commitment. Luckily, we don't take, you know, there's not more than two or three or four properties a year. So if we can stay on, clear it, we should be able to stay on top of it going forward.
And Madam, just a last comment. I don't want people to perceive that this is a money grab because of value of land, and Scarborough is extremely valuable. I mean, I pay my taxes, everyone pays, you know, most everyone pays their taxes, everyone should pay their taxes. I think the town is, you know, obligated, if not has a right to at least get that tax money. I'm not looking for the equity. I just want the tax money that we're due and we're promised as part of that deal. And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, every single one of the tax-acquired properties should be sent a notice that says you have one time, you can get back your property right now, just give us our taxes and you can get the deed. It cleans it up. But that's, you know, town manager's responsibility, not mine. I'm just saying, it's time to clean it up and everybody do what they're supposed to do.
And I think going forward, we can manage it like that. Part of the problem is we have some on this, on this list, if you will, from nineteen fifty-seven. So finding a prior owner might be a little challenging.
So, any other comments?
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? No? All right. Well, that leaves me with me. I'm really glad to see that you guys have made such great progress taking a step forward. Realistically, it sounds like, you know, there's a likelihood that everybody will have kind of a one-shot, clean out the backlog. I did chuckle the first time I looked at your list and saw the nineteen fifty-seven one that we've had for how long. So it'll be nice, like I said, clean slate, move forward, and have this new policy coming forward so that there's a clear direction of how we handle these going into the future. So with that, all those in favor, and that is unanimous. Onto the next thing is order number fifteen dash zero two two, act on the following request pursuant to Title Twenty-three, MRSA three zero two five, and the requirements of Section Four of the Scarborough Street Acceptance Ordinance. A, from Wegman Companies to accept the public infrastructure of the off-site improvements in Black Point Road and accept the right-of-way parcel access and sidewalk easements as recommended by the planning board. B, from Scarborough Property Holdings, LLC and Scarborough Capital Partners, LLC to accept the public infrastructure of the off-site improvement in Gin Road. And is there anyone that wishes to speak on this matter? And seeing none, pleasure of the council.
Move approval.
Second.
And any discussion? Peter?
Yeah, can someone, I tried to understand, A, what exactly are we doing there? Is it getting some, an easement and some sidewalks? I couldn't tell from the...
You're being lost, but you want to take a crack?
Yeah, with respect to that one, I'm trying to recall exactly what they did. I know they did some road widening along their section of Black Point Road, and I think there is a sidewalk that runs along entirety of their ownership as well. So generally speaking, as part of the planning board approval process, there are certain improvements that were proposed to become public improvements once they completed it. And that's what's in front of you. The council must accept them, formally accept them, and that's what this action does.
Okay. So we're satisfied that what they committed to do, they've done?
Yes. The county engineer is inspected, and they've been certainly built within accordance of our standards.
Okay, great.
Any other questions or discussion on this item?
The follow-up question, just on B, it looks like we're just getting a small parcel of land. Was that for a sign on the Scarborough Property Holdings, LLC? It looks like we're accepting a small sliver of land. I think that was for some type of traffic.
Yeah, it's three hundred and twelve square feet.
I think it was something so they could widen that road or something, and we needed that for maybe the lights or something? So anyway, but we're picking up, someone's given us three hundred square feet of land, so we're able to do something? Is that what we're voting on?
I think they did it as part of their requirements, but we are now accepting it as public improvements. I beg your pardon, I just don't know what, physically what they did to it, but I can find out for you.
No, thank you.
Anybody else? And all those in favor? That is unanimous. Moving forward, order number fifteen dash zero two three, act on the request from Vacation Land Dog Club, Inc. and New York County Kennel Club for a mass gathering permit for the AKC sanctioned dog show, the Southern Maine Coastal Classic located at Wasomsey Springs Campground, scheduled for Thursday, May fourteenth through Sunday, May seventeenth. And... And what a nice thing to see because that means spring is coming when they have their application in. So, is there anybody that wishes to speak on this item? And saying none, pleasure of the council.
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion? Questions? Jim Marie?
I know I don't live all that far from Wathamski, but I'm always aware of when the Dog Club's doing their shows and they've got all sorts of cool things, I guess, they do over there. I just think it's great. It brings in a lot of people into Scarborough. I think it's a great use of those Wathamski Springs campgrounds. And obviously, I'm going to support this, but I just think it's a great thing that they do over there.
And anybody else? All right. Saying none, all those in favor? And that is unanimous. Moving on to item number nine, the Standing and Special Committee Reports and Liaisons. We'll go ahead and start with Sean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For finance, we held our last meeting. I'll be honest with you, it's been a long week. I forgot, I think it was last week.
It was.
Had a couple of meetings. The topic was solid waste planning for the town and I really wanted to thank Mike Shaw as well as Kevin Roach, who came and spoke on behalf of EcoMaine and gave us a very thorough presentation. We also, if you get a chance to watch it, we also had a representative from Waste Zero that came and talked and updated us, or presented at least to two new of us, two of us that are new, about the Pay As You Throw program and the opportunities that are available. I will mention that the Finance Committee will continue looking at that and hopefully have some type of recommendation going forward on how to approach the discussion around that, whether it's part of this year's budget or as a future item. We're going to kind of look at how we want that presented at the next meeting. The next meeting primarily, by the way, the next meeting is the 24th, right? Yeah, 24th, at 4 o'clock here in Town Chambers. We have invited our county commissioner, Neil Jamison, who's from Scarborough, representing District One, and the county manager, Peter Crichton, who's also a Scarborough resident. But they're going to be coming and talk to us about the county government and their impact on our budget over the past several years and where they're moving forward. And I did want to mention that the joint Standing Committee, kind of a workshop committee between the town council's finance and the school board's finance, in which both Chris Ciasso and myself chair together. We have set into our calendars that on April 29th at 7:00 PM, did I get that date right?
Yes.
Okay. My dates have been horrible lately. April 29th at 7:00 PM at the high school auditorium, we will be holding a town hall open meeting in which we will be presenting the budgets at varying levels. The council and the school board will do more of an executive presentation of the budgets, while staff, including our town manager, finance director, superintendent, and the director of finance for the schools, will be able to direct us and provide details around the budget and where the spending is heading this year. We'll also have other department heads available. Everyone is open. It will serve as a public hearing, so there will be a section in which the council will in fact convene, take attendance, and then open it up for public hearings so that it can serve as that. But it's going to be open, again, it's in the high school auditorium. And we will be making a presentation, or at least a paper presentation to you by email and hard copy about the rollout of that and what all of our roles are and that's kind of getting formalized now, we're getting the pieces put together. I also wanted to mention, as a courtesy, that Mr. Ciasso and I will be writing a joint op-ed for the local papers, advertising that and kind of explaining what our intentions are and how we'd like to see that work and what our expectations from that meeting will be. It's going to be a very interactive process, by the way, in which not only will people be able to submit their questions in advance through a dedicated email, but also be able to submit them there. And if they're not asked, then we'll keep record and we will answer everyone's questions over time. And I also, in the, one of the two liaisons to Sedco, I just want to mention, tomorrow's actually their board meeting at 7:30 AM. And we haven't had a meeting in a couple of months, so it's kind of a new agenda. But they are looking, by the way, at potential ordinances that involve Haggis Parkway and also other commercial zones that can help with small business, sorry, small batch processing plants. So it's a very exciting opportunity. I think I heard we also have a guest speaker from the council, but I don't, I'm sure she will cover that. And I did want to mention EcoMaine, the other committee I served. Again, I want to thank Mike Shaw, who also serves as a board member, and Kevin Roach. You know, I got to tell you, I was on the council 10 years ago when this council in particular, but with the help of other communities, really dove into the relationship that we had with what was called RWS. And I just want to say that I think Mr. Roach and the new board has come a long way. It's an incredible success story about municipal activism and good management and financial success that really has put us, being a primary owner of the company, in really good hands and for the great future because we have a lot of responsibility with them. So I want to thank him very much for that. That's all my committees, Madam Chair.
Phil?
The Finance Committee that Sean just reported on, we are going to be meeting every week for pretty much the rest of the duration of the budget season. So that people should be aware that if they want to be able to stay current on what's going on with this budget process, we'll be here against, I'm not quite sure, Thursday's at 4, 4 to 6, I think, is the schedule from here on out. The Energy Committee, which I'm a liaison to, met this morning. We continued to talk about the municipal streetlights concept and that is in front of the PUC. The PUC was to have made, done rulemaking for that process by the end of December. They did not make that deadline in February. They did not make that deadline either. It's now expected that by June, we will have rules in place that will tell us exactly how that process is going to work. And the way in which the process works will dictate in substantial part, the viability of this proposal from an economic point of view. Because if you're going to buy the light fixture and put LED, you know, low income, low usage bulbs in there, you really have to know how much is it going to cost you to buy it, how much is it going to cost you to install it? And so there's a whole series of issues that need to be worked out before there's any viability to this idea. But we are having the Energy Committee continue to pursue it. They also talked about the solarized projects that are going on on the seacoast. And for those who are not familiar with that, this is where a collective buys space and rules now exist that allow for not solar panels to just be on a person's roof or in their yard, but to be in other space owned collectively with others. And that process is being watched closely by the Energy Committee. South Portland High School has, is going to be a meeting there this week on that. We also looked, doing an analysis of the energy consumption and efficiency for the town office, the town building. And we looked at some preliminary data, but expect that it will be more refined at our next meeting. So it was a busy, active morning and more to come on that in the future. Thank you.
Jim Marie?
I'll start with a short one, and that is, we didn't have any Conservation Commission this month, so I've got nothing to report on that. The next meeting will be in April. I'm on the Legislative Policy Committee for Maine Municipal Association and we spend one day a month reviewing a good portion of the 800 bills that are in front of the legislature at this time. At our last meeting, we reviewed, oh gosh, a whole bevy of bills, but we've decided as a group to really concentrate on spending our so-called political capital on the governor's budget and how it's going to impact municipalities. It's been a very interesting group to work with because they're from all over the state. There's about 100 people and, you know, city managers, town managers, select people, they run the whole gamut of elected officials to others. So that's been very interesting and I, as things come up, I'll keep you posted. But right now, the governor's budget is, it's in flux, as you've probably read in the paper. He does not have really good support for it, even across the board, even from his own side, if you want to put it that way. So we have to, we have to be vigilant and paying attention to what's going to happen and what we call a sausage making up there in the legislature. And I would encourage anyone watching at home to stay in touch and to stay in touch with the legislators here in town and let them know because one of the very probable outcomes of the budget will be an increase in property taxes and a tax shift. So we have to keep an eye on that as officials who are managing our town taxes here and trying to keep our taxes stable for our citizens. The municipal capacity bill that Scarborough presented, it go to hearing and it didn't seem to run into any opposition and the Maine Municipal Association passed it. We are supporting it as MMA, so we should be all set with that. I also went to the Metro Regional Coalition meeting on behalf of Mr. Hall. Wasn't able to make it and I'm happy to go to those. And again, what was the big discussion? Budgets. And what are we going to do? Also some talk about, you know, how can we be more efficient in working together as towns? I mean, that is one good thing the governor has talked about that I think towns could be doing more of. And I'll let Mr. Hall talk about some things that we've been looking at in his comments. Long-range planning, Haggis Parkway, the small batch processing, which Sean mentioned, we've had a meeting about the future of Dunston. What are we going to do for planning down the line there? And also doing a public facilities inventory for the town. And when are we using them and when might they need replacing? Just to get more information for citizens on that. And yes, I am speaking at Sedco tomorrow. I'll be speaking about municipal revenue sharing, how that works, and some of the current legislative legislative activities. That's it?
The ordinance committee was scheduled to meet yesterday, but we had to cancel the meeting. And the next meeting will be on the 21st of April. Last Monday, the Planning Board hosted a Dunston revitalization meeting. It was a joint meeting with the Planning Board, Sedco Board, and the Long Range Planning Committee. And they basically just presented what has been done up in Dunston and some things that are kind of being thought about at this point in time. Not too much expansion is expected to take place in the near future until there's some sort of a decision made on possible new exit to the turnpike just south of Scarborough. Because that's got a big impact on what you can do at Dunston. If the traffic on Route 1 is going to continue to be as heavy as it is, doing further development up in Dunston to slow down traffic is the wrong thing to do. We have another West Castle on our hands. So with that in mind, it was a very interesting meeting, a lot of new concepts, a main street effect, but it would have to be in the back. Very interesting. And then the Planning Board held a public hearing on the zoning ordinance changes for the historical preservation of buildings and properties. And basically, the Planning Board sent back a positive note back to the town council to go ahead and accept it and they agreed with it. The Planning Board also did a sketch plan review for the proposed changes to the contract zone of Piper Shores. And some discussion was spade as to are we sure that the changes are only in the area that they can currently build in? And there were some people that had expressed concerns about this. A lot of people are expressing concerns because only because it was brought up one time and now everybody thinks it's going to be brought up. It's only the portion that's, can be built on now and basically for new buildings, expansions of buildings, can have an underground parking garage, and everything is going to be right there where it is right now. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Ed. Peter?
Good evening. Last Tuesday, March 10th, both the Shellfish Conservation Committee and Coastal Waters and Harbor met. They have a lot of things in common, so I'll talk about those things first. The first thing is there's going to be some repair work done to the boat landing at Clay Pit. There's some concrete slats that you drive on that are really corroded and there's rebar sticking through. Those are going to be replaced this spring as soon as they can. There's a day marker missing on one of the ledges out in the harbor that the pipe has kind of rusted and been removed that they're going to address and get fixed. They talked about this summer trying to have both at Ferry Beach and Pine Point, some racks that will be available for people to leave their kayaks and canoes that people have been requesting. There'll be a rack system that they can rent a space and keep their things there instead of having to drag them off the top of cars. Then in particular, for the Shellfish Conservation, they spent a lot of time working on a new shellfish ordinance as it relates to Maine labor law. It needs to come to the council. I think they actually had a special meeting last night. I think they made progress, but we will be seeing that, I would guess, next time. I hope so. That's the plan. And then they, you know, as another sidebar, they're investing, at least the Shell, they're going to invest some of their budget in new crab traps. They have square, brown ones now, they're going to get some square ones. So that's kind of it from my perspective. Thank you.
All right. So, Appointments Committee did meet this evening at 6:30. We have some names to post for the next meeting. The first one being Community Services Recreation Advisory Board. And it would be an appointment for Mr. Liam Summers as a second alternate with a term to expire in 2016. And for the Energy Committee, there's an appointment for Mr. Allen as a first alternate with a term to expire in 2015. And I'm sorry, that was Ronald Allen. And just for the folks at home, we do have many vacancies within our town committees and if you are interested in serving, you can certainly, or offering some assistance, you can certainly go online and get an application or please stop by the clerk's office and talk to Tody and she'll be more than happy to assist you. We still have openings on the Board of Assessment Review. Coastal Waters and Harbor has a second alternate position available. Conservation Commission still has openings, as well as the Housing Alliance and Parks and Conservation Land Board. And then Housing Alliance will be meeting this coming Thursday, March 20th, at 6:30 PM. Unfortunately, they had to cancel their last meeting, so this meeting is still for the appointment of officers and those sorts of things. Next meeting, which will likely be its last, is the Historic Preservation Ad Hoc Committee. Will have likely their last meeting Tuesday, April 7th, at 6:30. And appointments will need to meet again as a committee prior to the next council meeting. We do have the audit scheduled for 6:00 PM, I believe. So if we can, we can meet as a group, 5:30, 5:45, we'll shoot out a reminder via Tody. And that's it for me. So on to the next item, which is Town Manager Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of points of interest, just to update the council. I continue to work with council chair regarding the assessor appointment. At this point, we're doing background checks for the potential candidates. We have two candidates we've interviewed. We're also continuing to evaluate the county regional option. That's certainly an important part of the process. And I've also explored kind of a third alternative, which is kind of a shared services model, looking at neighboring communities as to whether there's any capacity to partner with them. So we're anxious to move through that, but by the same token, I want to make sure we make the right decision. So we're fully... So we're fully exploring all those options as we speak. Uh, right now, I'm fully engaged in budget. Uh, two weeks from tonight, I will present the budget to the council. Um, as I've reported in the past, we are changing the format in terms of how it's presented as a document, and I think it's gonna be very good for the process. I can tell you, it's, it's causing me fits right now, just converting to a new, new format. But I'm confident we'll get there. Uh, so I just kind of put that as a warning. I'll be quite preoccupied, if you will, over the next several weeks, so, um, I'll do my best to respond to your, your needs. But, uh, just be mindful that, um, I am working in that direction quite a bit these days. Also, a couple of points of interest. Um, I did have the chance to present to the residents of Piper Shores this week. Uh, I was asked to do a presentation that I provided to the Scarborough Chamber. Uh, it's always a great crowd. There, if any of you have met with folks, uh, the residents there, they're always very well-informed, they're not shy about their opinions. Uh, but it's always a very interesting conversation, and I, I very much enjoy it. I also attended the Scarborough Community Chamber Board meeting this week. Council Donovan was there as the liaison. Um, and I went there, I, I am an ex-officio member of the board, though I must admit I'm not a terribly frequent attendee. But apparently, at their last meeting last month, a number of questions came up, I think in new business or some such part of the meeting, regarding the council's action, uh, the resolution regarding the governor's budget and the potential effects. And, um, as you may expect, uh, the, the chamber group is interested and, I'll say, somewhat concerned, some of them regarding the, even the, the hint of a local option sales tax. And so my, my job was multifaceted, I suppose, but what I really wanted to do is convey and help them understand the context within which that was suggested. Um, and I, I promised them that should that ever come to pass, and I honestly don't expect it, well, in the near term, there would be a long, detailed local conversation, and they would be central to that for certain. Just as an aside, I was interested, I, I looked at the two thousand and fourteen retail sales numbers, uh, just to appreciate, um, you know, the sales generated, you know, in Scarborough. And it's, it's quite impressive. We, uh, we have over four hundred and eighty million dollars of sales generated in town annually. Um, and the, the one thing that I was kind of, uh, was surprising to me, I, I did, uh, you know, one percent of those sales, what does it mean? And it produces about four point eight million dollars. Interestingly, almost the exact amount that we receive in GPA for education this year is what that number is. So I, I don't intend to do anything with that, but should this conversation go forward, I just wanted to have this stuff available. Um, so, and I'm pleased to share it around for other folks, if you want to talk about it. And lastly, somewhat out of the blue, in fact entirely out of the blue, I received, uh, an inquiry from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, uh, earlier this week. They've requested an interest in meeting with us. And so I'm now in the midst of arranging a time, uh, quite possibly next week to meet with them. And they've not really indicated what their interest is other than they want to kind of pick up where the conversation left off about a year ago. So, uh, we'll certainly keep, uh, the, the council abreast of where those conversations go, uh, as soon as I know more.
Thank you, Tom. Luck with U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
Thank you.
Councilmember comments. We'll start on the other end with Peter Hayden.
Uh, I'm good. Thank you.
Ed?
By me.
Wow, hey, all right. Jim Murray?
Don't forget your clink bags, please. Even though winter's almost over, um, it, it provides an important service in this community to help people with their heating. Oil prices are down, so we can buy a lot more oil from people with the money that you contribute. So don't forget to do that. That's it for me.
Well, uh, happy belated St. Patrick's Day to everyone. Uh, those who are recovering from binge, I made the serious mistake of trying to get into reruns that night again. Just shows you what sort of judgment I have. Uh, and again, I, I missed the opportunity to wear anything green, and I, I was just, uh, thinking, reflecting the fact that all of my great-grandparents were born in Ireland, all, all of them. So, uh, uh, I also want to offer congratulations to the Scarborough High School, uh, boys hockey team, which was a long shot, uh, to win the state championship, and did. And that's usually a reflection of a team that, that did not have a, a good seed in the tournament, improving every, every practice, every day. And that's really a, quite an accom... accomplishment, when you can, uh, come from out of nowhere and, uh, and win the state championship. So congratulations to them.
Sean?
Nothing to note, thank you.
All right, and, um, I did just want to make a note. Um, for those of you, I'm not sure if we mentioned this at the last meeting or not, if we knew yet, but Project Grace with their fuel rally, um, was able to, to make the, the magic number to get the donor match. Um, so it was some really exciting news. And, um, I do have some condolences I'd like to offer this evening. Um, so again, um, the council generally likes to offer its condolences to, to those that have, um, lost loved ones here within the community or the family of, of those members. Um, the first one this evening being Winifred, or also known as Winnie Alquist, passed away. Um, as you may recall, our former chair at one point, Mr. Ron Alquist, that was his stepmother. Um, we also, um, would like to extend the condolences to William Geiger. Um, he was actually the director of, um, Public Works here in Scarborough for, for a number of years. Um, he also served both in the United States Marine Corps and in the, in the U.S. Army, and actually, um, was, um, part of engineering with, with my father. So he will be missed as well. Um, also our condolences to the family of John Duty. Um, again, he, he was, um, a on-and-off lifelong resident in Scarborough. He, he graduated from Scarborough Schools. He went to, he served our country in Vietnam. Um, he was kind of a local, um, for, um, he was a local fisherman, commercial fisherman, so. Um, as well as, um, offering our condolences to Paulette Herb. Um, she was, um, she had seventeen years before she retired with the, um, Scarborough School Department on the custodial staff. Um, so again, our condolences to them. And the last one, as I mentioned earlier, Becky Delaware, who was not able to come and present tonight, um, lost her, her mother, Helen Plummer. So, um, again, our condolences to those families. And that's it for comments from me. So it's that time of the evening. Is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous.